Hello, my name is Jeremy Spencer. I am here with a candidate for local school board and current incumbent Herbert Rowland. He is running for reelection for his seat for post four, which covers basically most of Saint Mary's, Georgia. And we're gonna have a discussion today about him seeking his reelection for school board. So how are you today?
Very good, thank you, thank you, Jeremy.
Some things that I'd like to go over, you know, initially are mainly your campaign platform, you know. What is your platform gonna be going into this reelection? You know, and just give us a reason why you're seeking reelection. And is this your fourth term?
This would be my fourth term if I'm reelected. I have served for going on twelve years and ten years of that I've served as board chair. During that period of time, I conducted over three hundred meetings, including appeals, regular meetings, special meetings, your name. And made lots of speeches and different advocacy positions for the school system. And the reason I'm seeking reelection is at the urging of my fellow board members, and we do work together as a team. I want to make that very, very clear. It's not an individual, it's as a team. And we've been a very successful team. And I would like to see through a lot of the projects that we have underway, the completion of our plan for for school safety that is underway now, that will be actually an expansion of what we already have, and the completion of the new fine arts center and other initiatives that we have taken in our quest for continuous improvement. Especially the implementation of a lot of new technology that we know will come online. I mean, how much has come online in the last twelve years since I was elected? Because when I retired from teaching in oh six, I was elected to the school board. And then at my first meeting in oh seven, I was elected chairman of the board. So I had a learning curve on that respect, even though I taught government and economics at Camden County High School. Because I am a fifteen year tenure teacher with a lot of different certifications, particularly a specific one in economics, which I can teach at the college level. So my primary platform is I'm running on my record. And I would like to continue to be able to see through the projects, the expansion plans, and the plan for continuous improvement, even though Camden is very, very high. There's always room, because when you're not moving forward, you don't stand still, you move back. And we want to continue to move forward in our quest for excellence.
Well, I'd like to go into some topics. And when you just mentioned with school safety, that's become a very interesting topic and a hot topic in our community lately. So school safety has been a series all around the country, the state and Camden County now. A recent town hall that was organized by students, the topic of school safety and mental health was discussed. There have been related events on cyberbullying in the community against local students, by local students. And also there's been in and out of school threats that have filtered into the school. And two teenagers, although the suicides were coming off campus, it was, it caused some anxiety in our student body and our teachers, and also in our families. So what are some things that you would be able to do when you're elected, reelected back to the school board to address the concerns of school safety? What are you gonna address?
Okay, as I have found out just within the last few days, the Georgia School Boards Association is going to be conducting a webinar on school safety and the role of school boards in school safety to clarify the issue of what can school boards do and not do as far as that issue goes. And I will be participating in that on May the ninth, which is in this upcoming week. Currently, of course, we do operate, we have our operational safety plan, which is approved by the Georgia Emergency Management Association, and we've just recently inspected. And the plan that we have in Camden County was approved. And also, the State Board of Education has asked that we submit our emergency management plan to be used as a model for the state. So we feel like that is very, very good. As far as what we have in place now, first of all, I'll address the active intruder issue, which I think is what you really would like to hear. Back when I first started teaching schools, before Columbine, we had no concerns about anything like that. After Columbine, things tightened up considerably, and that's when we started enacting these, or the school board did. I wasn't on the board back then, of course, started enacting plans to deal with such as that. Such as, for instance, teachers being able to lock their doors from the inside, which was an issue at Parkland, I understand. As far as I know, to the best of my knowledge, every school in Camden County has the ability for the teacher to lock the doors from the inside, which I think is a great thing. Also, there's been an issue about electronic locks. Each one of the schools in Camden County has an airlock as you come in. And all of those, of course, do have the electronic locks to release for anyone to be able to enter the building, but they have to go through that entrance first. It's, you know, it's an issue about how far do you go with this sort of thing as far as school, you know, resource officers go? Because we have two resource officers now at Camden County High School, and we have one each at the two middle schools. And response time for the elementary schools in all of the communities, and we've timed this, is less than five minutes before you have local law enforcement at the door. I received that information this past week. So we feel like we are doing what we can within our capabilities now. But as new technology becomes available, of course, we're going to make, we will, we will enact it in order to make the schools as safe as we possibly can. Now, the issue of suicide, which has come up recently, of course, my heart goes out to the parents of the students that have committed suicide. I can't imagine how terrible it would be to lose a child, being a parent myself. But we have enacted a training program that I have been informed has been made available to all. And all our teachers are supposed to have had this training, which is suicide pact training, to determine which students may be at risk. And those students are to be identified, and there's supposed to be counseling available to them. And so far, we have a hundred and twenty students who have been identified at all of our schools together. I don't have a breakdown on each school, but I was given that information yesterday with counselors available in there to monitor those students all the way through to the end of the school year. Of course, that's the in-school, in-school counseling that we will have. And there's also, of course, some information being made available to parents, what to look for and so on and so forth. Because actually, we have the students for eight hours a day, the rest of the time they're at home. And both of these suicides recently have occurred outside school hours. But nevertheless, we want to do everything we possibly can to prevent these tragedies from happening. And like I said, I'm sure I'm gonna have more information after that webinar about the exact role of school boards, because as you know, we make policy and we have a safety policy in place. But it's to be enacted by the administration, because we cannot micromanage what the administration does. So we're doing all that. But I'm quite happy that Camden County's emergency response plan was approved by GMA and is also being used as a model throughout the state for the schools in the state that need to adopt something like this.
You brought up a couple of things that I wanted, and I've kind of asked about it here going into my questions here. But I want to go ahead and kind of rephrase a couple of things that I wanted to ask. You talked about how y'all have identified a group of students that were having the suicide pact. And you've, you said that there are some teachers, is that right, teachers being trained?
Teachers, and of course, the counselors are already trained in dealing with this. But they can't do it if it's not reported, because even when you and I were teaching, we were obligated by our contract. Yeah, we were obligated to report anything.
Is that aligned with the current, what is it, sources of strength program that's being aligned with the nonprofit Camden Family Connection here? Okay, so that's being aligned with that?
That's correct.
So they're being trained now, because based on the timeline that I was given by the executive director there, it was gonna start in May?
No, it's been moved up, because the information I got from the central office this week is that that training is underway. I was looking to see.
Because the timeline I was given by Stephen Sands, who's the director, said May seventh through the eighth. So you're saying they've moved that training up?
Because the note I have here from the central office that all have, will have had training. Well, I have a note that all, I'm confident that all have had training. And they'll have, you know, have access to whatever information they need to do that.
So it sounds like there was a proactive measure to move that.
Proactive measure, that's correct.
Okay, and I kind of want to ducktail into the, I'm gonna skip over my mental health question and come back to it, because I have a mental health question. And so this goes into the school safety resource officer thing that you brought up. It has been learned that there is a new proposal using the Camden County Sheriff's Office instead of the city police department to use technically trained officers in the high school, Ninth Road Center and two middle schools, with plans to implement a school resource officer in every elementary school thereafter. The proposal looks to fund the program at about a million dollars. And the new proposal, if put in place, would could replace the existing memorandum of understanding between Kingsland and the Saint Mary's Police Departments. I spoke with Sheriff Proctor about that, and he also said that there could be an opportunity to absorb some of the current program that's already with the city and with both city police departments. So I didn't know if you could expand on that and how that's going to work? And how could you bring in parents and students involved in that process to be more transparent?
Yeah, that has not come before the board. And it sounds good, I will say that, because we do have, like you said, a memorandum of understanding right now between the municipal police and the schools. Because as you know, anything like, for instance, Clean County has their own school, their own school police force, so forth and so. But I was actually not aware of that, because it has not, like I said, it has not come before the board.
Well, that actually came about at the town hall meeting that happened this week with the students. A candidate for a school board mentioned it, and I had already learned of it before that. And so I reached out to Sheriff Proctor after the end of the town hall and interviewed him on that. And that's what he had addressed. So, and so it is in draft form, the proposal is in draft form. But he did say that there was going to have to be a combined effort between the county commission, the school board, because his department's not gonna be able to fund, basically fund the one million dollars. But obviously, he was saying that the technically trained officers would be introduced and a possibility of absorbing the current program that's there.
Yeah, well, unified program sounds very good to me. I mean, we'll see when it comes before the board.
If it does become before the board, how would you inform parents about it and students about it?
Well, of course, we publish whatever we would pass at the board, and then it would come out that way. Of course, it would be announced at the schools and we'd, I don't know whether the administration would reform a focus group of parents. I'd have to find out, but like I said, it sounds like a very efficient and a very.
Would you recommend that as a transparent piece of?
Of course, we have total transparency anyway. And like I said, the board acts as a vying individual. I certainly don't hear anything there or see anything there, be any kind, anything but good. And anything that improves, we're for it, I mean, if it's better.
I want to kind of jump back up to the mental health piece, because that's becoming, that's becoming a, something that educators across the state, across the country are saying, you know, just to kind of put it out there, I can't teach anymore without having to deal with all these social and emotional issues. And so I had a teacher that I discussed this with, not here but elsewhere that I know. They said, you know, I'm dealing with so many social and emotional issues, by three o'clock, I've not taught anything. And so I was like, wow. And so, you know, each area of the state is obviously different as to how things are working out. But obviously, there's a need for some type of service where that's concerned. But here's my question, is it the sole responsibility of school districts to address the mental health issue? And are schools equipped to handle that?
Well, of course, it's a shared responsibility with the parents. If you know as well as I do, that if you spot some, a child that appears to be having problems, let's say no problems, some sort of, anything that's aberrant behavior, let's put it that way, it should be reported to the professionals that you have on staff at the school to deal with that. The teachers themselves should not really be dealing with it, except to recognize it. And then if they're given, let's say, an individual plan to teach those students to deal with that particular type of problem, then they carry that out. But like I've said before, you know, we have students a certain part of the day, and then the parents have them the rest of the time. And I know, and I know you know as an educator, that sometimes the student we see at school is not the student they see at home. We know that. And so the thing is to identify any problem like that and to deal with it as best we possibly can, and to have those students on the right track so they can learn. And so the teachers should not spend that much time dealing with discipline, let's say, or with issues with a few students in the class and not be able to carry out the primary instructional duties, which is to educate the children. Because we're obligated to give them an appropriate education that prepares them to be responsible citizens when they graduate and give them a safe learning environment to do it in. And that, of course, is included in this, because there are other things other than just intruders that constitute student safety. You know that, I know that. And I think all the parents know that too. But that is an issue that does need to be dealt with absolutely, by professionals, of course. Because you know about confidentiality laws and so forth.
And that's a good point that you brought that up, because there's so many behavior intervention pieces that have been introduced in the schools in the last several years. Some of those pieces, you know, around the state, and I've seen them up close and personal around the state, where some of them are being implemented very well, and some of them are not. I personally see a concern about, you know, bringing in behavioral intervention pieces that dabble into almost forms of psychotherapy and at different higher levels in the intervention system that are with that. And I don't want to get in the weeds here, but, you know, when is parental consent gonna be advocated for where that is concerned? Because, you know, being in education for so long, we become a compliance culture. And so we become so compliant and so compliant that it's almost like that bringing in parents with issues like that becomes an afterthought. And I think I can speak to that with my own experience. So, you know, how would, how would we can make the process more transparent where the behavior intervention pieces are to allow parents to know, we're gonna have to intervene a little bit deeper with your child? How are we going to do that?
Well, you know, we even have to, we have to get permission from the parents to even test a child. And we have school psychometrists that do that. So, you know, that's really a tough question to address. I don't know that it's actually a board issue. It would be an administrative issue. And like you said, the confidentiality, you've got that fine line. You need to intervene, but how do you do it? Because you do have to get permission to do it. No question about it. It's totally confidentiality. You can't reveal. We have that fine line. But that's why we have those professionals on staff, is to evaluate if you can get permission to do it.
Right.
That's the whole thing.
And that's a whole nother discussion, but I'm glad you brought that up. Last part on school safety, mental health, you know, we've had some, we've had some issues of cyberbullying that's been quite disturbing in our community. The issue with the local students that threatened other students on YouTube. They accepted a lesser plea deal, because the victims' parents were told that the students doing these threats were gonna be seeking rehabilitation and remediation. They were allowed back to the school due to a broad legal interpretation of the law, and they were allowed to return to school in the event that if their actions rose to the level of a felony. So the actions rose to a level of a felony, then the plea deal came down, because the parents all worked together to hopefully rehabilitate the students. But then there was no rehabilitation, no remediation, according to the parents that I've spoken with and also that I have interviewed. So do you think that those students should have been allowed back to school? And what could have been done as a school board member to address this issue in the community with state elected leaders that represent us?
Well, actually, as you well know, the school board does not intervene in any type of disciplinary actions unless it comes before the board. It's dealt with by the administration. And then if it progresses through the discipline ladder, which I know you're familiar with, and it gets to the point of having a tribunal and the students receive a punishment, then if they don't agree with that punishment, they can appeal it to the board. And at that point, that's where the board gets involved. But other than that, we, like in this particular issue, it never came before the board as any type of issue. And of course, you realize that the fact that the school system has no civil authority as far as crime goes, any type of crime. And like you said, if it had been a felony, that's another story. But it was not. It was legally guarded down. So there was not anything the school could do it, other than just to begin with the discipline ladder, what the type of thing it was and work it through, which is what we did. Or what, we didn't do it, the school board didn't do it, but the administration did. And they held it according to the handbook and according to the school policy.
Have you reached out to the families that were involved in all of this? Have you reached out to them?
I have not, because I felt like the school system had handled it, and it was not really at the place of a board member to do it.
Okay. And that's another concern. Do you think that the code of ethics for board members are too strict?
No, I don't think it is. Of course, we had a, we had a local code of ethics before Senate Bill eighty-four was passed, which the school board got to the sack. But it does limit us considerably, because we do not have the same authority as, let's say, a city council or a county commission or any other elected officials. We are more tightly regulated than any other. And individual school board members can't have absolutely no authority unless we're sitting as a board. So now, if a parent had contacted me, and none of them did, if a parent had contacted me, I would have certainly talked to them. I mean, I would have just, you know, tried to, just, I would commiserate with them. Because certainly, I felt, having to be a parent myself, I would have felt a lot of empathy for them. But like I said, I have no authority whatsoever. So that just, like you said, that's the way the code of ethics works and the way we're regulated.
I'd like to go into constituent services, you know, that's, all candidates have to have some version of that, and it helps them stay in touch with the public. So throughout the community, particularly this year, with many things that have been, there's been a challenging, there's been a challenge in the confidence in some pieces and operations of the school board. One event that came, that does come to mind is the bus transportation piece that happened earlier this year. Changing of school times, the parents complained that there was not enough information put out about that schools were gonna change the times, flip-flop the times for elementary and high school students. Some parents have complained about the publishing of school board meeting agendas being published, you know, twenty-four hours ahead of time, which is the law.
That's the law.
But they're saying that they never get to see them. Possibly budgeting shortfalls for the federal impact piece that has come about. And also the renewal of E S law. So saying all of that, what are your constituent services gonna look like in this new term? And what deals do you think you can bring to the table to improve communications between the school and the community about these important issues?
Well, of course, I'm readily available, because like I tell people, being retired, being a retired teacher and a businessman and so forth, I'm a full-time school board member, and I'm available, my phone number's always been in the phone book. And then, of course, I have an email address on the school website. And I get out and about. I do a lot of talking to parents and other constituents at Walmart and other places I go, because I'm certainly not, I'm pretty, I'm very visible, as a matter of fact. But, you know, you were talking about the change in the school schedules. Well, we really have not had that many complaints overall. I mean, I know there've been some, and I know there've been some problems. But overall, I'd say that the positives to this have outweighed the negatives at least four or five to one. And having taught at the high school on the block schedule, one of the biggest concerns was the loss of instructional time in fourth block, and you yourself are familiar with that. Because we were constantly struggling with trying to make up work and so forth, and losing a lot of our classes. According to the information I received, that has been virtually eliminated at the high school. A lot of that came about when they reclassified us under a higher classification after travel so far for everything, not just athletics. And then, of course, we had a bus driver shortage that's been alleviated, well, it has been alleviated by the change in the computerization of the schedules too. And then the one and a half mile transportation block that we had during the recession has been restored. So those students are getting transportation home now. And if you ever notice when Saint Mary's Middle gets out, they're not even close to the number of students walking anymore that it used to be there, which is a safety issue also on that, because there's more to safety than just intruders. Because as you know, that's one of the school's safety issues. And as well as the other drills that we have to have, which is fire, of course, fire is important too, I won't go into that. And then, of course, instructional time that had been lost in the classroom and our elementary schools were not getting nearly enough instructional time. And the state called that to our attention. They were losing about six hours of time each day. Were not getting nearly enough instructional time and the state called that to our attention, they were losing about six hours of time each day. At the elementary schools and that's been restored. And frankly, uh, I've had more constituents compliment us about the the time, the difference in the times at the elementary schools than anything else. Because the fact that they start later, the kids are not in the dark. And they, with the time they get out, it's okay with most of the parents, they don't have a problem, I have a couple of them right here in the neighborhood as a matter of fact. So, they seem to like it, uh, the counselors at the high school tell me that they like that, that it works, the students have gotten used to it now. And any fears about less achievement because of a later start time have completely been alleviated by the scores that we're receiving at the high school. It's it's they're they're up considerably up and I have the new statistics on that. But uh, that scheduling for for that particular thing, which I think, like you pointed out, is probably the biggest issue we've had this year. We didn't have any school rezoning, which always brings out, in fact, that's when we have public meetings for those. Um, but but that was that was actually not done by the school board. It was done by a focus group. And those focus groups uh, met several different times and they they developed three different options and the one that we adopted was the one that was recommended by the group after they had done all that. Then it went through the administration and then Dr. Harden presented it to us with his recommendation. But we discussed all of this. The fact, yeah, it it was discussed. Pro zan cons.
I do have a question about the um.
Yeah.
Uh, the focus group.
Yeah.
Um, the after, there was so much, there was so much, uh, I guess anxiety about the new change.
Yeah.
And and a lot of the people in the public learned about it, um, and they were like, I didn't know anything about it, they didn't know there was a focus group. Do you think something like that should go toward uh, like a public comment session before deciding that?
Well, actually, it was, it was put out on the website for public comment before we ever adopted it.
Okay.
Yeah, it did, we we put everything like that out for public comment before.
Was it put in the newspaper as well?
You know, I can't answer that, I I don't know that it was, but I'm not sure that it was, the the newspaper does not attend our school board meetings. And so, you know, they depend on whatever our minutes read. Pretty much for that, um, but um. Uh, that that particular question, I don't, but it was put out on the website because all our policies are put out that way, anything that changes like this, we do that.
I I've interviewed several parents about that, um, that reached out to me about that and. They they're saying that they they didn't know and you're right, it was on the website, it was there. Um, that I believe it was on the so one of the social media platforms the school had.
It was.
Um, but it seems like that the engagement of that or the frequency of that. Uh, it seems like we're, we've got something in our face all the time now and unfortunately, uh, our our students have that too. So, uh, u- using those new uh, platforms that are out there, what what would be a better way to get the word out about that?
Well, social media is, we we both know, that's the way, that's the way you get it out now. As far as the newspaper goes, it doesn't really reach that many people, uh, you you do have it print in front of you, but uh. The fact too that we don't get any type of Georgia news anymore from the Times Union is a is a real drawback on that sort of thing. So, I, you know, I really can't imagine what other than social media and. That word of mouth, but the problem is with word of mouth is it gets, you know, the old game, what starts doesn't always end up that way. But we try to be as transparent as possible and as far as what you said about the agendas go, we we post them. You know, according to the law, that's the way we do it and then you never know if a last minute thing's going to come up. But uh, but a lot of people don't seem to realize that we have a work session.
Right.
On the Thursday before the school boarding meeting the next Tuesday. And that's when we hash out the different things, we discuss. At those so we don't take time at the ready my meeting going through all that again. And that's where we formulate the motions and we, because people think, oh, they just agree on everything. Well, no, we don't, but we have a civil discussion and then when when the vote's taken, like requires by law. It's it's the decision of the board because each of us individually, people thought when I was chairman, oh, you can determine this, you can determine that. No, I don't, all I do is act as parliamentarian. And that that was it, I had one vote just like everybody else. And with five members of the board, you're not gonna ever have a tight vote. And uh, so that that's where it was, but we, people, the way you always have unanimous decisions, well, not. Until we have a plenty of discussion, believe me, a lot of these things that start out one way don't always end up that way. But I encourage people, if you wanna see the way business is really done, come to the work sessions, they're open. Everything, we have open meetings, we comply perfectly with the open meeting fact.
Well, I'd like to move into uh, testing and accountability.
Yeah.
And then we're heading to budgets, we'll we'll talk a little bit about, you know, our budget process here. Um, and then we'll finish up with challenges and opportunities uh, a- ahead for the school district. Um, the the testing and accountability, it's it's um, it's become heavy in the last several years.
Going through it now.
Right, um, uh, uh, the it, there's no question Camden County has very good test scores, there's no question that their their data. Is impressive, there's no question at that whatsoever. But my question is, do we focus too much on that? Do we focus too much on the test score? Do we focus too much on the t- teaching to a test, because I hear that a lot from my colleagues and I can I can vouch for that myself. Um, and so do you think we focus too much on those data points?
Well, like I said, as a school board member, have no control over that, the state says you do it and you do it the way they tell you to and now that we test online. There's no room for any type of cheating or, you know, getting by getting away with anything, not that we ever did here, but you know in Atlanta, it's a problem. But uh, as a teacher, uh, in the classroom, uh, and of course, I'm talking from experience twelve years ago because I've not been, well, I've been in classrooms, sure I have. But uh, I I know we talk to the test, yes, we did. Uh, we did not teach the test, but we talked to the test because that's the way you're measured, are you successful or not? And I taught uh, both uh, both regular NAP economics. And uh, actually helped formulate the test and uh, when we when we changed and we had different Georgia performance standards, I was one of the people on the committee that. That I actually formulated those, I think they're still in place, yeah, two of us at Camden High that worked on that. Um, I think sometimes this is strictly personal, this is nothing to do with the school board whatsoever. Because uh, like I said, we comply with the law and and I, the school board does not determine the testing, nor do we determine curriculum, it's. It's all set by the state and you know that, I know it. Uh, I feel like some subject areas um, maybe get more uh, emphasis, particularly in the lower grades in the high school. Everything is, you you've gotta earn those Carnegie units and all the all the courses are carry equal weight, is the way I put it. But uh, being a social studies teacher, I feel like social studies and science may not get the emphasis that they really need in the lower grades and that's. Because of the state, not the local, not the local system, we we have to comply with the law. Um, and then as they move through, sometimes uh, the scores are not as high in those areas as they are, let's say, in math and ELA. Excuse me, that's English language jargon, I slip into that jar, you know, being a teacher, I slip into it. But um. I, you know, and what are you gonna do? There's there's nothing we can because local boards of education are bound by law to to enforce the state laws and federal laws, we have to.
Well, speaking to that, that because that's a compliance culture. You know, what, as 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 an elected official, how can you voice your concerns to those that can influence that policy? What what would you say to them?
Yeah, alright, we do get an opportunity to do that, uh, Georgia School Boards Association, which uh, you're familiar with and I hope most of the public is. Uh, we have annual conferences, we have two of them, we have an annual conference, one in the spring and one in the fall or winter, actually. And then we have numerous meetings throughout the state and at those times, we have elected officials from the state level that are there from the from the legislature. And uh, we and School Boards Association has a lobbying uh, in the in the legislature. And we voice our concerns through them. And sometimes we get listened to, uh, I mean, after all, I mean, the uh, qual- can I say Q B E? The funding formula has finally been restored and a lot of that is through the lobbying effort that school boards have had with with the Georgia School Board Association. And uh, of course, I don't know what it's gonna do for the sixty million dollars we've lost since two thousand eight, I don't think they're gonna pay any of it back, but at least we're being funded. For what we earn at the current time and that's gonna greatly help in the upcoming school year and you'll see, I can't go into details, but. Yeah, it's still in the process and that's part of the budgeting processes, probably gonna change. But, because we didn't expect to get the money, but uh, nevertheless, but yeah, in answer to your question, yes, we do have have ways that we can do it. But we have to go through the process, it's the same with the ladder.
Do do, so do you have to go to the Georgia School Boards Association or is that, or can you just independently pick up the phone and say, look, I've. This is, this is what we need change with.
Yeah, I can do that, I can do that and I have a good line of communication with our local, with our elected officials. And uh, because I know them and uh, and I I have, I've been every time, as a matter of fact, I spoke with one of them last night. But uh, right now, things are probably better than they've been in a while, very frankly, but uh. That uh, that emphasis on testing is a is an issue that's, as long as I've have been in education and this. This is uh, what, twenty-seven years, I guess, if you count my teaching time and time on the board, it's uh, it's it's been an issue.
Yeah, um, um, it there's there's a lot we can go into that there and I wanted, I wanted to move into governance and the budgeting and stuff like that. Um, recently, we we amend, well, last year, it looks like we amended our IE two contract. And uh, IE two stands for a waiver uh, that allows the school board to uh, get into a contract with the state school board. For specific flexibilities, um, some would say that 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 takes away local control, what what would you say to that?
Well, IE two was the best alternative that we had when they forced us to change our our method of governance and uh. I think it probably takes away less than 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 the others are, I. You know, some people, we, you know, the choices we had, what they call traditionalized, they changed that because they call it state stats mode to start with. Then IE two, which is kind of a blend between that and the charter school situation, we 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 turned down the charter school idea because it would have. Been just an absolute nightmare as far as management with with separate governing entities at every school and so on and so, and the school board definitely would not have had. That much uh, oversight, let's put it on that, so we feel like that was that was the best alternative and. Um, of course, we we believe in local control because that's, that's where it's at, I mean, the. Constituents can reach us and and express their concerns and and so forth, whereas if it's all done out of Atlanta. You're just one little area down there.
Do you think the strategic waivers are working, uh?
The ones that we've asked for have, yes, yeah, they they help us considerably, yeah.
Where 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 do you think they're helping the school system the most, at least our school?
I, I prob- I think probably the fact that we have control over our class sizes is probably one of the best ways that we're that we're able to address that. Because we do, we we can do, you know, what we have to do. Right now, we have small classes, uh, well, relatively small, what we call manageable classes. Because I remember the day when you could expect to have thirty-five students in a class.
Yeah, I I had thirty-eight one year.
I I do remember one time when I was teaching middle school, I came in and they were sitting on the windowsills and I thought to myself, I don't even have a desk for all these. That was the first thing, but but I I'm I'm thankful because when I when I teach in my gifted honors classes, I didn't have over twenty-one in any of those. And it was, it was, it was great. But you you know, you, there is a a optimum size on those classes, you don't want them too small, but 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 being able to determine that, I think, is a is a good thing.
Uh, budget, the budget process, uh, we, this year has, uh, they, we, it was told that we were gonna, we possibly would lose some. Uh, definitely would lose some federal impact dollars, um, and then the the funding formula was finally fully funded. Uh, it seems, uh, I can't remember the actual number.
It's over eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say a million dollars. So, it looks like we're gonna get close to a million dollars back. Um, and then we've got the p- potential to lose about three million dollars uh, in federal impact money. Um, and so. You're, you've been on the board a while and you were on the board during the economic uh, hardship.
Yes, I was.
So. How does losing this money equate to what we've gone through previously through the economic recession and what? What things are we gonna look at to prioritize for funding at this point?
Well, the way it stands now with with the budget the way it is, and incidentally, I. I can't really address it directly, but I think we're not, probably not going to lose that whole thread at me. I can't say that for sure, so, you know, I, so I I really didn't say anything if you want it that way. But having the over eight hundred thousand coming back in from the state, I don't see where it's going to uh, affect it that much because. First of all, Dr. Harden's a great money manager and and we have the best, probably, I think, the best accounting department in the entire state. I mean, they've been cited as being a model for others with Ms. Easton and uh, and others. Um, the budget, of course, has already been adopted, it's, it was done some time ago and we do, incidentally, have to have two public meetings on every board budget adoption. Before we adopt it. Um, and I do not see any current programs being cut. Uh, there were some programs that we had hoped to be able to institute. Um, and maybe even some that we might have wanted to restore and don't know if that's going to happen, once again, like I said, there there. There's so many things still up in the air at this point as far as that funding goes and we'll just have to see how it goes, but. But as far as our essentials go, um, we can do it because we do have, um, let's say, an emergency fund or or. We we do have a fund balance. Back in oh eight, we didn't have one. And we still did not go into debt because one of the primary concerns of this board and this is board policy is something we agree on, we will not go into debt. This is a debt-free school system. The new Fine Arts Center is being built completely debt-free and it's all as a result of East Plus money. And we didn't build it till we had the money in the bank. And it's earning interest and interest rates are up a little bit, so it's not not as bad as it was at one time. And it's the same thing with the new East Plus and people that, we we hope that the public will vote for it. The referendum will spell out exactly what we can spend that money for and people need to know that we cannot spend it for any wages or benefits. It's strictly for capital improvements and of course, we do buy textbooks because the state doesn't fund that, textbooks, of course, are being replaced electronically. All the technology you see in the schools with the one-to-one are better, uh, Chromebook relative to the to the students is is paid for with that. Uh, improvements, there's some major improvements still scheduled for Camden High in addition to building the new Fine Arts Academy. And uh, any repairs that have to be done, anywhere, school buses, we have to buy school buses with East Plus money. And they have to be replaced regularly in Camden County because we put a lot of miles on with this big county. All of that, that that we do and and everything about the East Plus is totally public knowledge. It was put out before the public, it's published every single month, every single month on what we spend it for. So, it's essential, but the budget process uh, actually starts before you know how much you're gonna get. And you back into it and then hopefully you've you've funded it for what you're gonna receive and it helps a lot that we're gonna get the full funding on our. Uh, I started to say S T E, but anyway. Average of ten, ten minutes rate at schools, um. So, that's um, that that's the way it is with the budget process and it is a continuous thing and and it's, it has some flexibility in it because it has to. But that is something that comes before the board, we don't make up the budget. But we do have oversight, no, we don't make up the budget, school funding is the most complicated thing, it took me at least two years on the board to understand anything about it. And and I mean, I was a business major, so it's worth that way, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it it does, and it it, it it, what I what I heard from that and and viewers may hear other things, but what I heard from that was. You know, we're we're not, we're not where we were because of the federal laws, we're not where we were e- equally to. Right, in in addition to the fact that we've got the additional funding coming from the state.
Right.
And that we weren't expecting, but it was a good expectation, so it seems like, it seems like some programs won't get off the ground. Um, you know, that you, that we wanted to put in place, so that that's what I take.
And essential programs will stay in place, that that's not, no concern, no concern over that. And uh, of course, support from the community is is wonderful as far as our extracurricular goes because uh, and that's, that that really helps considerably on that. Because we can't use our our funds on a lot of that.
And we'll just wrap up here with challenges and opportunities, what do you think is gonna be the biggest challenge for Camden County schools in the next three or four years?
Well, I am hoping that we're going to get the space for them. And if we do, the challenge will be to provide those technical training that that they're going to require for those and we're set up to do it. Set up to do it, uh, we would really like to see uh, more growth in the county. Because we are set up to have more students than we have, we we currently have a little over nine thousand students and when I first started teaching, we had ten thousand at Camden High. At Camden, I mean, not at Camden High, we had close to three thousand at Camden High and then the total school system was around ten. We've seen increases at the at the elementary and middle school, so that may be filtering on through, but still, overall. Enrollment is not what it could be, we can add teachers and of course, there is the challenge of hiring highly qualified teachers, but. The uh, Dr. Tucker and uh, Dr. Miller and others that are involved with hiring say that we are having. Applications from as far as way as Japan to want to come and work in Camden County. applications from as far away as Japan to want to come and work in Camden County. And we already have an international faculty. So uh, to be able to get those because of the, the challenges to provide, to stay constantly ahead of the curve as far as providing the type of education these students need in order to succeed. That's the whole point. And we have a huge, huge percentage that go on to college and they're very successful. I mean, my grandson is one of them. And uh, and they, they don't, they, they go to the top schools too. And everything that we have at Camden High with these, these dual enrollment classes and AP and those. And we are planning to add two more AP classes this year incidentally in connection with that. Uh, they can go in school in the state of Georgia and apply those credits, including Georgia Tech, Emory, all those, they can go. And, and we're very, very proud of that. So the, the challenge is to not just maintain, but to improve. And I mean, when you're right as, as overall the number seven school district in the state of Georgia out of a hundred and eighty school districts. And when you have the number four high school in the entire state out of what, eight hundred high schools overall, that's something to really be proud of. And our elementary and middle schools are, are highly ranked too. So otherwise you wouldn't have that overall number seven rank, which covers a lot of things. It's not just academics. But uh, it, it just, what's really made me feel good is when I go to these statewide conferences and everything. And people see that you're from Camden County. They wanna talk about our academics as well as our athletics. And, and they say, oh, Camden, how do you do it? How do you do it? And we said, well, one thing, we have a top-notch superintendent. We have A one plus faculty everywhere. And we uh, and, and, and our board works together with the superintendent. We don't, we don't, we don't fussy about it. We, we have a very, very uh, cohesive board, let's put it that way. And just because we agree, that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean we agree all the time. It just means that we do it civilly. We don't see a, we, I mean, we're not in the business of sell papers. I mean, you look at some of this stuff in Florida and, and is it okay if I say something about Florida school boards?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because some, living here on the border, so many people think that we operate like school boards in Florida. And you know and I know, we do not. Because first of all, they make thirty five thousand dollars a year and we don't by a long shot. I mean, we're paid two hundred dollars a month base pay. Um, but uh, and they have much more authority than we do. And you see all this disagreement and the fact that they, that they elect their superintendent, which means that they can elect somebody superintendent down there that is not even, not even an educator. And that's not the way it works in Georgia because you hire highly qualified people to do it. Cause I tell people and they don't believe me, but I tell them it's the truth. Dr. Harden's our only employee. Yes, we approve the, the hiring list that he gives us as far as teachers and administrators go. And uh, anybody says we don't hold him accountable, I brought a little visual aid. This is his evaluation from last year. Yes, we do. And see the thickness of that. So every aspect is, is evaluated.
And it's available to the public.
And it's available to, well, all personnel records are, are confidential. But, but uh, you know, because really there's only one thing, it's either satisfactory or not. That's the way it is. But uh, yeah, personnel records are confidential.
Where do you think are the, where do you think are the best opportunities right now that, that's going for Camden County at the moment? You kinda touched on some of that, but if you had to pick one, what, what's the, what's the biggest opportunity that they have?
Well, the opportunity is to attract some manufacturing or some sort of businesses other than retail. We, we need, desperately need that sort of thing. Uh, I mean, you look around and we have, I, I believe in that. I believe I'm correct on this. We have the highest percentage of our land in Camden County that is not in the tax digest of any county in the state of Georgia. So around sixty percent is because pine trees and uh, land that you can't develop because of environmental concerns. And then government tremendous amount. It's not to say that, that the base doesn't certainly pay its way. I mean, it does. I don't know what we'd do without it if we didn't have that. But we need industry and, 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 and we need maybe a big distribution center or something like that. The land's here. And we will provide the training for the students. All we need is just tell us. If, right now, we're training students to go other places is what it comes down to. We really are. And uh, even, even when they graduate from college, like my grandson, graduated from Georgia Tech with honors. And is a CPA in Atlanta. I mean, he couldn't, couldn't get work here. Or he, or he didn't really try to, he already had a job when he came out of tech. But uh, it's the same thing all over. Now, some, some come back and we have, we hire as many people that come back as, as teachers as we, as we can when they come in. If they have the, if they have the uh, the credentials. And we, and we, we have uh, good, but of course they do have to qualify. But it just, it amazes me the way uh, the way this county has so much potential. And it's just uh, you know, being a Camden County native, I mean, I'm a, I'm a suburbs generation of my, of my family in this county. And it's just uh, it is, I mean, I remember the heyday of mill and yes, it had its problems. But it did pump uh, pump a lot of uh, income into the county. But when you look and see that the school system is the second largest employer in Camden County, second only to the base. And uh, we actually put back into Camden County the formal salaries of about fifty two million dollars a year. You have to excuse my dog. She wants me to take her for a walk, which is all we have.
Well, um, yes, absolutely. Uh, well, it was, it was good to sit down and discuss these important issues with you. Um, and I think uh, our viewers will get a lot of information out of it. And I do appreciate your time.
Sure, thanks, Gary.